Are you ready?
Yep.
Thank you for joining us this evening for the April 20th, 20th, April 20th, Monte Sereno City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call. And council member Lawler?
Present.
Council member Mekachak?
Present.
Council member Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Malahi?
Present.
And Mayor Luthold?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Any changes to the orders of the day? Hearing none. I would like to recognize Mayor Protem Alahi to say a few words about Ramadan.
Thank you. I guess I'll start with Assalamualaikum, which is a message of peace for everybody. Ramadan is a 29 or 30-day month, depending on the moon. Muslims observe fast from about a little bit before sunrise to sunset. These days, it's from 5:00 to 5:10 a.m. to 7:50 p.m., which is about a 14-hour fast. And the fast is not just not eating food, but also not drinking. And also, you're supposed to have decent thoughts and good thoughts and do as much charity as possible. The saying goes that those who spend their substance in the way of God is like that of a corn, as it grows seven years and each year has 100 grains. So anybody who gives charity in Ramadan especially, the effect is multiplied. And I'm really happy I had posted a message from what Ramadan to the next door group and from our to our city, and the comments that were received were very, very nice. It's, I think we're in a spirit where people understand each other, understand each other's religion, and understand that every religion really wishes the best for other religions. And that's what, you know, Ramadan's thought is all about, that every person practices their religion freely and encourages each other to do the best, be the best possible person. So they can be the best example of their own religion. So I appreciate the time you've given me, Amir, while you talk, and I wish you all the best of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move to oral communications. If there are any, any members of the public wishing to speak on matters which are not on the calendar tonight, please raise your hands to be recognized and we will take you in order. We do have a hand up. I saw with a Tracy Hadid, did you wish to speak tonight? If so, please raise your hand again. Okay, and we will recognize you. If anyone else wishes to speak, then please raise your hand to stand in line.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Mr. Hadid, go ahead.
Yeah. I want to say good evening to you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Amir Hadid of 1-8782 with the Road in Monte Sereno. We made you aware of our predicament with PG&E extending an ugly pole right in front of our property, damaging our view and devaluing our property. There's wires sticking all over the place. It's really ugly. And apart from impacting our views, also devalues our property, like I said. I'm not sure if PG&E asked the city to do this kind of terrible work. But, and if somebody agreed to it, and I would like to know if that was the case. And nobody consulted with us about what they're going to do. They closed the road for a whole day. We didn't know what they were doing. I saw the explanation that was given to me by, that Sean sent me, and also from Daniel Sedano from PG&E Government Council. While it explains the, the technical aspects of why they do this kind of a terrible job, it does not take into consideration the impact and the disfigurement it causes. I feel that you, as our elected members, and I voted for a few of you, you should have some influence as to how our city should look like and not disfigure our streets and damage our views. And I really would value your input and your support and how can we proceed further without just giving in to PG&E just like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will see what we can do to continue to follow up on that issue if there is anything the city can do to help. Anyone else for oral communications tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, moving now to written communications. Ms. Radcliffe, have we received any written communications that have not made their way to the packet?
No, we have not.
All right, thank you. And moving now to the consent calendar. Do we have any members of the council who wish to formally pull any matters for full discussion from the consent calendar? If we do, Ms. Turner, go ahead.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't want to pull anything out. I just wanted to give the council some feedback that I got from the citizens of Monte Sereno. I'm not going to read all of them. I just picked out, you know, a couple of them. One said, "My wife is from Korea. She fortunately has never faced an attack on her ethnicity locally, but she has, and so have I, for supporting Trump, not with vitriol, but more along the lines of how could you, and so forth. Therefore, we have been cautious around strangers. Locally, we are clear of our support of the Republican principles and Trump policies and have discussed, debated it with others. I hope all will improve and with your situation too." The second letter I've received, and it is not the complete letter, I just, I just took out parts of it. Says, "I thought that this was anti-Asian hate, not political hatred." Wow, that was unexpected and unbelievable. So awesome people are coming forward. And I guess he was probably talking about either the, the Los Gadas Council or perhaps the, the post on Los Gadas Weekly. So that's all I wanted to share with you, and thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Any other council members who wish to ask questions about anything on the consent calendar? If we have any questions, let's go ahead and cover those. If we don't have any questions, then do we have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
And I think we have to take public comment on the consent calendar.
Oh, if we need public comment on the consent calendar, let's go ahead and open the consent calendar to public comment. And if we have anyone wishing to speak to matters one through nine on the consent calendar, please raise your hand. We can recognize you and determine if we need to pull the matter or can deal with it. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment on the consent calendar then. And go ahead and take a motion.
So moved to adopt a consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion from Mayor Protem Malahi with the second from council member Turner. Council member Mekachak?
Aye.
Council member Lawler?
Yes.
Council member Turner?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Malahi?
Aye.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. We will now open the first public hearing, which is to introduce an ordinance regarding the height of fences and associated matters. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yeah. City Mayor Hamilton here.
Yes, I'm Ms. Hamilton.
Okay, so what's before you is the ordinance to modify the fence height regulations, increasing the maximum height from six feet to seven feet or eight feet upon approval of a fence design permit. As many of you recall, way back in October, the council denied a, an ordinance directed by them related to fence heights. And in January, they brought the issue back for them to reconsider. At that time, they, you all established an ad hoc committee of council member Mekachak and Lawler, who went out and surveyed the city and brought back a proposal before you, which you then directed them staff to put in ordinance form. That ordinance went to the Site and Architectural Commission at their April 7th meeting. They discussed it and put forth a recommendation. What I'd like to do is hand it over to the authors of the ordinance to present in more detail the specifics. And then we can answer any questions you may have. The, the outcome of the Site and Architectural Commission meeting was that the commission recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Monte Sereno amending the fence height to increase it from six to seven feet or eight feet upon approval of a fence design permit and make other amendments within the municipal code for consistency. So at that, I'd like to hand it over to the authors of the ordinance to discuss more specifics.
Thank you. Mr. Mekachak or Ms. Lawler, did you want to offer some input about how this has come about and what the results are that are proposed here?
Do you want to go ahead, Liz?
I was going to defer to you.
Okay. We, council member Lawler and I, as we said previously, we went through, actually, maybe not, the, we walked through part of the city of Monte Sereno and we discussed the different alternatives. And we came up with one that we thought would work for the city of Monte Sereno. And essentially, it was to keep the existing height at six feet, and then you could add a one-foot lattice on top of that. And you would have the right to do that anywhere in the city of Monte Sereno. And I'm only talking about the side yard and backyard that has, this has nothing to do with the front yard. And then we thought that, we proposed that if someone wants a solid fence, solid wood fence over six feet tall, then they would have to apply between six and seven feet to the Site and Architectural Commission for that. And then any fence over seven feet tall would require review by the Site and Architectural Commission, regardless if it was six feet with two feet of lattice or seven feet with one foot of lattice or any combination thereof. And then that went to the city attorney. And Mr. Rubio put that into an ordinance. And then that went with, with staff's report to the Site and Architectural Commission for review last, last week. And they were in favor of recommending that back to city council. And then there was some feedback from Mr. Tony Jeans that the Site and Architectural Commission wanted city council to consider. And those comments are captured in the, with the staff report. And then council member Lawler and I did another, this time a drive through the city of Monte Sereno. We went down Dave's Ave, we went down Highway 9. And then we went into the, into the hillside, south of Highway 9, and then came out onto, back onto Highway 9 and back through Dave's Ave. So we were able to, to see some of the different fence types on the hillside as well. And council member Lawler, would you like to talk about that at all?
Sure. We, like I said, I got, well, I got to ride in a Tesla my first time. Anyway, we enjoyed a nice drive and saw all the various types of fencing, open wrought iron, et cetera. And, and so it was, it was, we determined that the ordinance as written is very, applies very well to our community. And we felt that we should be able to go ahead with it. And the, the ultimate goal of this, again, was to provide the privacy and security that residents are wanting while maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. There were also a number of public comments that we received. And Mayor Luthold, do you want me to talk about those at all or summarize anything briefly?
If you want to, to add anything in particular, they are part of the public record. So they are part of the record already. But anything that you'd like to point out to us that affects any decisions, if there are decisions to be made tonight, certainly be sure to bring up.
Okay, I'd just like to say that we received 10 comments, and eight of them were from residents of the city of Monte Sereno. And geographically, I won't say who they are, but geographically, I'll go down the list. Eaton Lane, two from Villa Sereno, one from Vineland, one from Dave's Ave, one from south of Highway 9 on Bachman Ave, one from Rose Court, one from Highway 9, one from Blanchard and Winchester, and then another, sorry. And then we also got one from the deputy fire chief outlining that there's no, that the county fire department sees no obstacle in having a fence as high as eight feet. And then we also got a very positive response from the chief of police, Chief De Sina. And he didn't have any data, but in his opinion, it would increase the safety of the residents of the city of Monte Sereno. And I think that pretty much summarizes the information.
Great, thank you. Now briefly, we'll go ahead and open this up to questions. And Ms. Hamilton or members of the committee, feel free to chime in and answer these as people have questions. I have one initially, which is, I understood this when, when hearing about it and when looking at it from site and architecture, pretty much as you've described, which is that there are really three categories. Six feet with a lattice, as a matter of right, anyone can build it, no permits required. Just have to fit the normal rules that apply to the fences. And then I understand that to get an eight-foot fence, you have to go through site, or anything in the range of higher than seven feet with the lattice, you'd have to go through site and architecture. I know there had been discussion that it would be possible to go for any lot, not necessarily ones backing up to the indicated neighbors, to go for a seven-foot solid fence that would go through site and architecture. But I didn't see that clearly summarized in the charts here. Is that still part of this ordinance, that you could get a seven-foot solid by going through site and architecture in you in the city?
Yes, that is correct. And I would defer to our city attorney to verify that and/or Ms. Hamilton.
So with respect to the, the fence heights, there's three categories, as you mentioned. One is as of right, you can build it. And under our current regulations, as of right, you can build a six-foot side or rear fence out of any material you would like, any design you would like. This ordinance would also allow you as of right to build a solid six-foot wooden fence with an additional one foot of lattes. So that would, those are both not require any sort of building permit or city approval. If you would like a solid seven-foot fence or any kind of other fence other than those two that are allowed by right, you would need to get a fence design permit. The criteria for granting a fence design permit is limited to, you know, property with a shared property line with the County of Santa Clara, a shared property line with a school, church, or community center adjacent to or across the street from a commercial property, additionally adjacent to Los Gadas Saratoga Road, Dave's Avenue or Winchester. And after discussion with the ad hoc committee and staff, it was determined that those streets, given their uses, collectors are, you know, basically, they're the larger, more busy streets, which is why they would be justified for inclusion there. Additionally, you're entitled to granting of a taller fence if there is a construction of any accessory building, ADU, or main building within 13 feet of either side of the proposed fence. So that was put in there to address, you know, additional privacy concerns. And then lastly, if there's an existence of an average slope of 10% or more adjacent to that proposed side of the fence, as measured over the 10 feet from the fence location. So the thought process behind that is, you know, if you have a slope that, that is next to the fence that allows someone to basically peek over and takes away the, you know, the function of the top foot or two feet of the, of the fence, that's a good reason to allow, you know, a taller fence in that, on that particular side. So I'm hoping that answers your question.
Almost. Just to clarify then, a person with a regular flat lot who doesn't have any of those special circumstances would only have the option of the six-foot plus lattice. They wouldn't have the option of seven feet by going through site and architecture. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know that that had been talked about, I guess, adding that additional layer of the possibility of the solid seven-foot fence simply by going to site and architecture. We're no longer allowing that, but we've expanded the conditions where something higher than six could be taken through, such as with the ADU or the dwelling unit near, near the fence line, et cetera.
Yes, and frankly, given the fact that an ADU can be constructed on just about any parcel, you know, this, this, this potential increase up to eight feet could apply to almost every lot in the city at some point.
All right. Anyone else with questions? Ms. Turner, you've got your hand up.
I wanted to ask about the lattice. Will the lattice on one side of the fence have to look like the lattice on the other side of the fence and the back? Or can they be all different? I know Ms. Councilmember Lawler was particular about, you know, the way it looked. So I was just wondering, will, will that be permitted?
Well, if there's no city approval required, there's no way for us to control that they get the exact lattice on surrounding each side of a single property.
Okay, so the answer is yes, it can be different.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and open this to public comment then. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? If so, please raise your hands. Give people a moment here. Seeing none, we will close public comment and go ahead and move to council discussion. Council members, anyone want to discuss this further? Mayor Protem Alahi?
Yeah, I, I saw the email from Mr. Tony Jeans, and I was just curious if that was addressed in the ordinance or, or the fence ordinance takes care of the concerns raised there, if I could.
The proposed fence ordinance has not been amended to include any of those suggestions. So it's just still out there for discussion and consideration.
Yeah, with, with respect to these three particular suggestions, if the council wants to include them, they can. I would recommend that the council proceed by asking the clerk to read the title of the ordinance and then voting to introduce the ordinance with such amendments as the council sees fit. I will separately say with respect to, there are three suggestions by Mr. Jeans. One is that the provision that covers as-of-right designs should also permit an open design up to seven feet. Substantively, I think that's a little different than what the ad hoc committee had envisioned. And secondly, given that there's no definition of open design up to seven feet, that would make implementation of this ordinance a little bit difficult. So we would need to figure out exactly, not that the, that the city can't have this regulation, it's just we would need to clarify what this regulation would mean. With respect to the second suggestion, it is to clarify an existence of average slope of 10% or more along at least 50% of the proposed fence location. And I think as written, it would actually just require an average slope of 10% or more along the entire fence location averaged over. So this, this is something the council can decide to do. You know, it would basically lower the threshold, I think, a little bit. And then the last one is changing the way that we measure height, you know, from the highest grade side of the fence. I think that this, you know, is a good clarifying suggestion. So I don't see any reason why the council shouldn't adopt it. But also, you know, I think the, the common sense of how you do measurements would normally have this type of approach apply anyway.
Thank you.
Further discussion or comments?
I believe that regarding the six-foot open design, that we should keep it as it's written. But if someone wants to have a seven-foot open design, anything over six feet would, open designer not, would then go to site and architectural commission. And I believe that's what council member Lawler said earlier this, this evening.
Yes, and we, we both discussed, we both discussed this. And any, any type of fence above seven, seven feet or higher or up to seven feet that isn't a wood with a lattice would require approval by site and architecture. And so it's already implied in the ordinance. I, I think we came to the conclusion, both council member Mekachak and I, that it really wasn't necessary to add any of this spurbage since it's, it's already implied and can be inferred.
All right. Any further questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I, I think I agree with those analysis. I would suggest we do add the third comment that Tony Jeans made. As far as the measurement is concerned, I mean, it's kind of obvious, but it'll be terrifying to put it in there, which was basically that the measurement is going to be from the lowest point on the highest-grade side of the fence to the tallest point. I just recommend ordinance, we add that in.
All right. City Attorney Rudden, should we introduce this with the amendment that's proposed or the clarifications that's proposed? Or should we introduce it and then add that to it? What order should we take that in?
I, I would recommend that the mayor ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance. And then the council can move to introduce the ordinance by title only and waive reading and introduce it with that amendment.
All right, so we will ask clerk to read and introduce the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number NS-225, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Sereno amending section 10.06.130 of the Monte Sereno municipal code, height of fences and section 10- 10.06.130 of the Montessorino municipal code, height of fences and sex and section 10.08.040 site development permit to modify site development permit requirements for pedestrian arbors.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to introduce by title only and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending those sections and authorizing the construction as indicated with the clarification that the measurement be from the uphill side of the fence as described.
May I ask a question? So we're introducing the ordinance with just that one amendment, correct?
Right with that one clarifying amendment, the third one that the measurement be from the uphill side.
Okay, so moved.
All second.
Of a motion from Councilmember Lawler with a second from Councilmember Mekachak. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Hi.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Petamalahi?
Hi.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everyone. All right, moving to the first order of new business. This is to receive information from the customer orientation and operational excellence ad hoc committee regarding an online residential software to notify city staff of public works issues. We have a staff report or an ad hoc committee report on that.
Yes, Mayor, this is Steve Leonardi, city manager. Thank you. Last week, the customer orientation and operational excellence ad hoc committee and I met with two gentlemen from Civic Plus to look into one of their softwares that they're selling called Click Fix It. And this is an application where residents would be able to kind of discover something that they want fixed in the community, take a picture of it with their iPhone and or report it through web browser and then it can be tracked fully through the city and addressed along the way to improve our customer service. And I will let the gentleman from Civic Plus, John Mia and Javier Mendez explain it in more details. They have a presentation this evening because I'm sure their explanation will be much more enlightening than mine. But that is a summary of the direction of where this will be going this evening.
Hi, thank you, Stephen. This is John Mia with C Click Fix, part of the Civic Plus team. I appreciate everybody's time and allowing us to join tonight. I'm going to share a presentation as Steve, Stephen said, would you mind giving me access to sharing screen?
You should have that access already.
Oh, okay, there we go. All right, so as Stephen said, C Click Fix, so I'm gonna give you a little walkthrough here of kind of what issue we solve for here and you know, where we fit into communities. So C Click Fix, when we talk to our clients and towns, cities that we work with, we see there's an issue with when they get reports in from their citizens. They are seeing reports around town, different types of issues they need to report. And they all have their own particular comfort level of how they want to report it, whether it be through phone app, picking up the phone, calling somebody, you know, seeing somebody outside town hall, maybe going online and ranting about it, or possibly even writing a letter. And then on the backend, cities and towns are kind of left with getting those issues to the appropriate departments. And also to play nicely with other systems. So C Click Fix aims to be the one source catchall hub for all those issues coming in, whether people report from their phone, they call somebody, or they go on to the website, we can grab all those issues and get them out to the appropriate department, get them into the right systems. So essentially giving your citizens a voice, giving you a way to listen and giving you visibility to the issues as they process through and they are resolved and giving citizens notice when those issues are resolved as well. We do this with our citizen engagement tool by covering for walk-ins, as I said, mobile app, phone calls, embedded in social media such as Facebook and Twitter and embedding in websites. We help towns from town hall departments to public works, parks, police issues, utilities, codes of permitting, helping them to manage their, their work and get it, you know, assigned to the appropriate people and giving you the visibility you need on those issues. Make sure that in an effort, make sure nothing gets lost. As we have been around for about 15 years and we are now part of the Civic Plus team. We have just over 425 clients within C Click Fix and several of them near your area, Los Altos Hills, Dublin, San Mateo County, South San Francisco, Menlo Park, Foster City, just to name a few C Click Fix users kind of close to you there. Our app is and citizen experience in general is something we take very seriously. We want to make sure it's easy to use for the citizen, easy to use on your backend and to manage. And based off that, we have a four and a half average star with our iOS and Android application. Duplicate detection is one of our unique technologies. That is when a request comes in, our software can tell that it's already been reported and you can choose to follow an issue. So any requests as they're coming in when they're managed, any notice will go out to anybody who's following those issues. Including within C Click Fix is a full life cycle CRM, which includes request management and work order management. And we do integrate into other permitting systems and asset management systems if they're in use. So just gonna skip ahead here. So what's a quick fix looks like on a website is we embed into websites as reporting issue is seen here. And it would bring you out to where you can report an issue. So on the left here is you can type in the address of what you're reporting. And it bring up a category list over here that we would assist with helping you build out. So building these categories out for things that just matter to Montessorano, Montessorano. So any of these categories could be automatically set to be assigned to the teams that's responsible for those, depending on geography or the type of issue. And you can have multiple people attached to each request so that internally you have visibility to the requests coming in. On the mobile app, the app is going to geolocate you. So if you're taking a picture when you're out in the field on your way into work and you didn't have a chance to report it or to record, record the complete request. You can always complete the request when you get to a safe spot, such as a pothole, you know, when you get to back to the office, let's say. And once you upload the photo, it'll grab the coordinates of that original report and you can continue the request when, when you have a moment to, to report it. We are embeddable to multiple spots in the website. So if somebody was to get lost at the front page, you can find it into different areas. In this case, somebody search around for graffiti and found it in another area. So this is a look at our mobile app. So mobile app, this orange button at the bottom is always going to be located there for reporting. And you can have a list of existing issues or open issues, you can view them by map as well. And to the left, you have notices which can be, notice you send out to your citizens or C Click Fix users that say, hey, this road's going to be closed. Or maybe there's a parade coming up or back to school notices you can put in there. Above in our app, you can customize this by adding different URLs to link out to other informational pages for the town. Such as social media pages, events, surveys, anything you'd like to put in here. A top category in the past year is putting in COVID resources. So example here is just different categories you can fill it out with, again, completely customizable. The center here is an example of that duplicate detection. So as you're reporting an issue for illegal dumping, the software can recognize there were spent some similar issues reported in the area. And if you, if it's similar to what you're reporting, you can just choose to follow. And again, you'll get the same notifications as the original reporter when any of those requests are closed. On the right is where you can build out each category type to gain all the info that you need for each type of request. So you can make sure you have the best tools or, you know, you know, how important it is to resolve an issue such as an abandoned vehicle that might be parked, you know, half on somebody's grass because there's no curb. And you can report that if you can say, you know, is this on somebody's lawn or is it, is it on the street? You know, how long has it been there? You can, you can customize this with different, different questions there. It also gives you the ability for the reporter to hide their identity. So we know it's important if, let's say, you're reporting a blight issue on a neighbor. You don't want to be the neighbor that has been seen as reporting that. So you can report so that you'll still get the updates when the issue is resolved. But other users of C Click Fix won't be able to go in and see that you reported it. So I'm just going to walk you through what it looks like from the citizen's side to, to report an app. So this is on the Android app. So you open up the C Click Fix app, we can put the town logo up at the top there. And a click on the reporting button and we're going to add some photos from the camera roll here. In this case, it geolocated our address. But I'm going to show you another way to, just so we can show you a duplicate. We're going to type in a different address here. Just take a moment. We're going to confirm the address and then pick the reporting category. So tree removal. It's showing you there's duplicate requests that you can choose to follow. In this case, we're just going to move ahead and report it as a new issue. You can add your description here. And then you can input your phone number or email. Or we will also have your contact info. If you've signed up with C Click Fix, then you'll have access to seeing all their info if they're signed into the app. Now the issue's been submitted. You can establish on the citizen or the city, the city side of it, you can choose to send out an acknowledgement that says, you know, we've received your request. Generally takes, you know, two to three weeks or whoever you want to put in there for, for response, you know, to resolve this issue. Now, other pieces of the tool that we provide you with are the phone call taking interface. So anybody that's answering the phone in city hall can log their calls into C Click Fix. And this will also allow them to get all those questions answered for each type of report. So they don't need to be the expert when fielding these phone calls and hopefully to cut down on some transfers of phone calls to different departments. Keep it all into one place. And we can notify them by email when the issue's been resolved. And anybody that's using the app or using C Click Fix, even though this was called in on the phone, they'll be able to see the issue. They can follow it just the same as an issue that was reported on the phone. We do embed into Facebook as well. So another way to catch all the requests coming in. And we do have the notices built in. So just wanted to give you another look at this. So you can schedule these to go out automatically, or if you have an event coming up, you know, you can schedule them whatever or on demand. But you can put in this case, it's a parking ban. And what will happen is any of the C Click Fix users would get a notice on the phone. They can click on it, see the details of it, and then the history of notices will live in the, in the notices tab on the app. So moving to the backend of it, on the city side, we give you a way to manage all of this and have visibility to it. So you can take a look and see what's, what's still needing to be accomplished, what's open, what's closed. It gives your staff members the, the tools to have access to it on their phones and the laptop as well and open and close issues as they're out in the field. It gives multiple staff members the ability to follow particular types of issues. And gives them multiple teams availability for that. And you can set different controls where some people only have access to certain issues. Maybe they're only concerned with dead animal issues or graffiti report. So they can just follow the things that they're, they're, they're responsible for. And in an effort to make sure, you know, nothing gets lost, as you said, you can have automations so that, you know, multiple teams get a particular request or certain team members get these requests. And there's also escalations built in. So if you've established a service level agreement for a particular issue and it's gone past that service level agreement, you can have it escalate maybe to their manager. Or if it's gone past another service level agreement, you can have it escalate to that person's manager and so on. When an issue comes in, this is an example of that canned, canned response. So you can set these up for a prepared content. Or you can do each one customized. You can also have the ability to re-categorize. So if somebody's misreported under the wrong type, you can re-categorize it. You can also change the assignment. If you have somebody that's too busy or maybe they're off this week, you can move it to somebody else. You can also change the due dates on the backend. So if it's extra busy and you need to push it out, you can change that. And you can also set priorities to each issue. And when a request is closed, again, anybody that's following an issue is going to get notice of the acknowledgement and the closure. So you can see in this case, this has been, tree has been removed. And there's going to be a next step of a stump being removed and a power company is going to be involved as well. So you can have multiple teams and departments involved in the requests. And it also gives you the ability to see where issues are happening. So this is our discovery map. Then the software can help make decisions based off of maybe if you have a lot of potholes happen in one area or road damage that maybe it's time to repair that road. Likewise, if you have another area with lots of graffiti reports coming in, it can help you to make a decision. Maybe there's more police presence that needs to happen in that area. And most importantly, it gives you a report card. So it can give you an insight into how you're doing, how, how issues are being resolved, how quickly, what needs improvement. And all of this is, is shareable. So you can say back to your citizens. You know, they might see the most recent thing that happened, but you can show them, hey, this is all the great work we've been doing over the year. This is all the improvement we've done. You know, this is how, how quick we've been on service level agreements. So you can, this is all shareable. You can share this in reports to schedule internally. We do have some towns that share in town hall meetings to show, you know, just how much work they've been doing. And here's an example of just what, what our maps look like as far as issues. So wanted to get back to this. So in, anytime you're in a neighborhood, you see some things around you that need repairing, you can pop right on your map here and see any of the requests that have been made in the area. Maybe they haven't been made yet. Maybe you can report that as new requests. And that is everything that I have for you tonight. Wanted to thank everybody for joining us and I, I guess I, should I open it up for questions or because that'll allow it to.
Yeah, let's go ahead. If council members have any questions off the top, great. Otherwise, if the ad hoc committee has additional comments you'd like to make, that's good too. uh if the ad hoc committee has additional comments you'd like to make, that's good too.
Okay, well, then I'll go I'll go I'll go first. I just I just wanted to say, um, as you know, this 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 ad hoc committee was put together to ensure excellence in all of our services to our community. And so this is something that I think would uh would provide certainly best in class services in 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 many different categories. It creates efficiencies for residents as well as staff. And I think that it could be very helpful for us in making sure that uh residents have an easy way to report things and staff has an easy way to address things. And um anyway, those are my two cents, but I think it's a it's a great idea. Thank you.
Great. And uh Councilmember Turner, did you have um some comments or information on costs to share with us?
Yes, uh I actually, um, one of the reasons I really like C Click Fix is it provides accountability accountability for staff as well as for city council towards our citizens. And I think that's very important. Um, I I wanted to say that the software that goes on the on the phones, on the iPhones are free. So they the citizens can download it. We can actually use our picnic or upcoming picnic to train our residents to load it into their phones. And and we can get their them to agree to uh giving us their phone numbers and last name and email. And the information will be stored, however, will not be released for any other purpose. And that's something that uh our city attorney can draft for us, I'm sure with uh Civic Plus. Um, the other thing that I I like about this is if if is the reporting end, right, the the our Los Gatos want the Serena Police, they come every quarter and they give us uh a report on on the citizens, you know, how many, how many burglaries they've had, and we can do the same thing. Uh, we can track how many residents have called, uh what issues they've had. Are they common issues? Are they separate issues? Uh, and and I think that's gonna be a good thing. Now, the cost of this, uh we we talked to Civic Plus is five thousand dollars a year. And I I think that's reasonable because it includes upgrades to the system. It includes uh staff training. It includes implementation costs. And uh it it also includes a a person from Civic Plus, an account manager that we can call uh when we need to. Um, I also checked, by the way, with the city of Cupertino. I think you should go to Cupertino three one one. They have a fantastic implementation of C Click Fix. And you will see how you will see everything, the Q and A for for the public. I talked to somebody from the city, from the city of Los Altos Hills. They've been using this for three years now. And every year, the number of citizens have increased. So I think, you know, uh for us to to look at this, uh councilmember Lawler and I were thinking, you know, we can make a commitment for one year, see how we're doing. We make sure that that we are dedicated to this, making sure our citizens uh work on this with us and that they're trained. And then we see how it goes. In this way, we have consistency in our service. So those are my comments.
Great, thanks. Um, any other council member questions while we have everybody here?
This looks uh wonderful. Um, I if it if this application can deliver everything that was outlined, I think it would be uh really a good thing, a great thing for the city of Montesereno. I'd like to know just a little bit more about it. I I um will go to the website and also look at Las Altos Hills, et cetera. But uh on the face of it, this looks, this looks great.
Great. Um, all right. Um, if we have other council member questions initially, let's do that. Otherwise, let's go ahead and open this, find out if there's any public comments, if there's any members of the public wishing to speak on this subject, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Um, I see this is uh simply to provide direction to staff. Is that uh correct, either Mr. City Manager or Mr. City Attorney? This is uh simply uh within the scope of decisions that staff can make once there's direction from council?
That is correct, Mayor. Since this is a, uh as Councilmember Turner mentioned, five thousand dollars per year. It is if we were to sign a one-year agreement within signing authority of the city manager. However, if the agreement were to extend beyond, say, three years, then of course, as being an ongoing expense, would be better to bring it back as like a long-term agreement. So um staff's primary objective this evening is to get direction from council should they decide to have us take the next step in the process to bring this application on online. We would be looking for a motion to uh to direct us that in that manner.
Great, thank you. So um I guess um we can um poll the council members if there's um further discussion people want uh to have about this, please raise your hands. I see uh Mayor Protemalai, he has your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I I I guess the budget, the the five thousand dollar budget doesn't seem like much. I I'm just wanted to find out, is there more involved? Because it sounds like there was a fairly extensive presentation. How much training is involved? What kind of staff resources would be required to service this and whether the amount that's going to be taken to service this particular application uh would actually come from being, uh if if you're able to subtract from something else that we're doing, you know, that is in the same means, is it a net minus time or are we gonna be requiring more training and more staff to be able to service this? In 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 some areas, it's quite season training. It's fairly extensive. I mean, it's almost uh uh it's a good idea to have for a five thousand dollar budget, but if other resources are required so that we can actually use it, then it'd be a good idea to figure out what those are.
Thank you for your question, Mayor Protem. This is something that I'm not as concerned about the staff's ability to utilize it and learn how to use it and and implement it. I'm more, I would be more concerned about residents' acceptance. We don't necessarily know how it will stick with the residents of Montesereno if they'll widely adopt it, if only a few will adopt it. But that's why, you know, we would probably just sign up for the trial, the one-year period and and try our best to see how it it works out. Um, previously, we signed up with um the, you know, the Fiscal Transparency Center that we have through uh ClearGov. And that has seemed to have been, you know, been working out for the city. And that was a, you know, kind of an unknown when we first implemented it. This is a similar approach. We give it a try, see if the residents embrace it. Is it entirely essential? I think it's very extensive. Our city is quite a simple model. I would work with the rest of the representatives at Civic Plus to tailor something that is most functional and most useful to Montesereno. Uh, because if the functionality becomes too great, uh a lot of it will not be used. So I would say we would be looking at the most basic of models where they could report things that need to be fixed and we can track customer service inquiries through our system and better improve customer service. That's the primary focus, um not to get too complicated or too bogged down with something that's really, really complicated.
Yeah, I I I think you're you're right on with that. Uh, so you know, this, that's that's really something to look at because you know, software can get fairly complex, even if it's in an app. So I think that's the right approach. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmember Lawler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, we won't know until we try it out. So I I agree with uh our city manager that we should test it out and see how staff responds and see how the residents respond and go ahead and direct staff to move forward.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mekachak.
I would, I'd like to move forward on this, but I'm wondering if it uh, you know, it was a bit of a surprise to me. And I'd like to go and see a little bit more about it through the other uh uh cities. And I wonder if we could, if we could just hold off on a on a full decision for two weeks and and put it on the on the agenda at the next meeting to move forward. Um, that would give, that would give me some time to to take a a look at this. But I mean, it looks wonderful.
Right, Councilmember Turner?
Uh, yes, there was, there was a message here from uh the Civic Plus people that, like I said earlier, implementation is part of the five thousand dollars uh customer service. So suppose staff has a question, I don't know how to use this. I have to call Civic Plus. They don't have to pay extra for that. Uh, so that's a monthly service charge that other other companies, high-tech companies use. And this one is included with that. Any software updates is included. And the good thing about this software is if you're not using, for example, parks, since we don't have any parks, they're not gonna, they're not gonna subtract the fees because we're not using parks, but nevertheless, it's there and we don't have to use it. However, one of the things we can put in there is the Wimberly Walkway. That's our part, right? So we can have trash, we can have um construction. We can have uh stormwater, we can have drainage, we can have Wimberly Walkway, and we can tailor it to the way we want to. And that's the beauty of the software. And the software can also, just by the flip of the switch, you can say, I want all all citizens to know about the problem in Wimberly Walkway, or I may want just one or two. Uh, so I think it's 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 very flexible. Now, the 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 city that you should look at and you can just download the app on your on your cell phone is Cupertino three one one. They have a um IT department that uh have actually built up their their pages, their three one one pages to look really fantastic. They even have flyers that they distribute to to their residents. So we can copy some of those and distributed it to our residents during the picnic. And so that's why I was kind of pushing this, because if our picnic is in August, we I I asked them, how long will it take you to implement this? They said probably a couple of months. So we can actually do this by that time and get started. So those are my opinions. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I guess um my comment would be um that uh the ad hoc committee has done uh the initial work in terms of um surveying what's available and and honing in on this product. Um, other nearby cities seem to be implementing it. And and it is something that ultimately can just simply be a staff decision. Um, once there's clearance here, I think the ad hoc committee is already a go on it. We've got, we've got a couple of votes for it. Um, I'm also for moving ahead expeditiously. Um, and uh so I hear a little bit of reservation now with with Councilmember Mekachak wanting to take a look and just be fully on board. I would suggest that uh we give staff direction to to be ready to move ahead um and and take in that additional input of Councilmember Mekachak. If there's some sort of a red flag or some uh major alternative that you want us to slow down and look back to, uh we can uh hold off a little bit. But I think this is ultimately a staff decision. It sounds like we've got to go uh just as soon as uh you Councilmember Mekachak has uh become more comfortable with it. So um I'm all for, I'm a I'm a for a move ahead. Um, I think um Councilmember Turner, you have not a yes from you? Okay, Councilmember Lawler? Yes, uh Councilmember Lahey?
Yeah, I think you can move forward, but uh if Mr. Mekachak comes back with something that, you know, uh, we need to have another take a look at it, then he should stay in loop with the uh with our city manager. And then we can put it back on the agenda.
Sounds good. Otherwise, um that'll be good to move forward. All right, I think, um, I don't think we need a formal vote. This was a direction to staff item. So uh we've got that and uh I think we can move on to the next section. So um committee and commission reports. Anyone have reports for us? Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, at the uh Valley Water Commission meeting last uh week, the commission was presented with the rate increases, the wholesale rate increases that Valley Water was uh presenting. And the uh commission voted, uh majority of the commission voted to ask the water, what the Valley Water to not raise rates again this year. That is, that is my report.
All right, and um Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I wish I had good news, like like Councilmember Lawler, but HCD actually voted today to hold the arena numbers uh constant, so we're not changing it. So our arena allocation for Montesereno is a hundred and ninety-one. We still have the option, I think, of uh appealing this uh in May. So we ought to start preparing for that, but let me check into that to make sure, because I don't want staff to put in time into it. And they say, no, there there are no appeals. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. And um before we move on, either you or Ms. Lawler, I believe, um are participating in the county COVID uh reports, anything, any news on those matters? What we're doing with the uh updates?
Uh, yes, as of last Saturday, we, both of us had to sit out the meeting due to potential brownout violations with cities association. So every, all the members have to take turns stay out. But uh as you, as you all know, vaccinations have been opened up for sixteen and over and and the county has had has received a lot more vaccinations than they've been getting in the past. So they are hopefully, people are finding it easier to get vaccinations. However, obviously, J and J has slowed things down for the hard-to-reach communities and and adding to the hesitancy issue that uh people are still having. But they are working hard. Uh, they have a uh ambassador's program. They send out toolkits. I know our city clerk is very good at posting uh the information from those toolkits every week. And we will have another meeting on Saturday.
Great, thanks. And is testing um keeping up? Or is that an issue that we need to continue to push people to make sure to get tested? It seems like all the focus is on vaccination now.
Yes, testing has dropped dramatically uh because they feel people now feel that since there's vaccinations, they no longer to get, need to be getting tested. So they would like us to continue to encourage folks to get tested.
Right, thank you. Um, any other committee commission reports? Councilmember Mekachak?
Yes, um there may be an opportunity for the youth commission with respect to Silicon Valley Clean Water. Uh, they received a grant and I I don't want to get too far in front of it, but um I heard today that uh it looks like uh there could be something, uh a project for the uh youth commission uh on this uh next year. Um, and maybe uh Mr. Leonardi's can have a word about that.
Thank you, uh Councilmember Mekachak. Yes, so I did receive correspondence today from Sheila Tucker from the West Valley Clean Water Program. And uh we essentially, because we only have one more youth commission meeting this season, next year's, starting in August, youth commission can tackle this for the year twenty-one, twenty-two. So um Ms. Tucker is on board. Uh, of course, the youth commission gets to kind of pick their projects at their first meeting in August. But um I think this is a good idea. And I think, as you mentioned, it's good for climate action. So I think they will be enthusiastic about it. And we do have the support. So we look forward to that when the time comes.
Great, thanks. Other uh committee commission reports? I don't have any. Um, so we will go ahead and move to council member comments. Um, I have one um to begin with here that um I noticed that the Saratoga, the Saratoga Youth Commission has put out a series, I saw on Nextdoor. Um, they're putting out uh Toga Trails, um telling the citizens where they can go to exercise and find hiking trails and so forth around the city of Saratoga. And um I know Monte Serrino doesn't really have so many opportunities within the city limits for that. Uh, but I was thinking that to the extent that Saratoga has put that information out there and if Los Gatos uh were to put out similar information, it would be wonderful to uh to integrate that, to uh bring in the information perhaps onto our website so that we can continue to take advantage. to bring in the information perhaps onto our website so that we can continue to take advantage of letting our citizens know what their local parks and trails are and how to get outdoors and enjoy this beautiful weather. So I wanted to put that out there to try to motivate everyone to get outdoors. I think we're all a little stir crazy at this point. So other council member comments? Quiet council tonight, moving forward with great pace. City manager, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And that's a great idea with the trail maps. I think we could probably add a link on our website indicating the complete trail maps for most likely Los Gatos and perhaps Saratoga as well. So I will see if we can do that in the near future. And regarding the items this evening that I wanted to talk about, we have a couple deadlines coming up. One is May 4th for our community grants. So anyone who wishes to put in a grant request of up to $5,000 or something that has an access to the Montezarino community may do so. We have an online application accessible from our main website for a community-based organization or a CBO grant. The deadline is May 4th. Council will be choosing on May 18th at our May 18th council meeting, who gets those grants. And on May 5th, we have another deadline. The next two items I will discuss sort of as one, youth commission has come up with these great ideas this year. One being the social justice award. And we do have a deadline of May 5th on that. So just a couple more weeks for high schoolers to submit either a 500-word or less essay or a piece of artwork demonstrating what they have done to improve equity, social justice in their communities. And this is not limited to just Los Gatos or Saratoga High School, but also Westmont and St. Francis and Midi and some of the other schools where Montezarino students may attend. And the idea is to award a grant to, in, in honor of the student who comes up with the best essay or artwork and demonstrates what they did for social justice to the organization that they choose to donate $1,000 to. So great idea. And it's an ongoing program. We hope to recognize the awardee at a future council meeting. So council will take a part in it as well. And it's just an ongoing message that I think is important and we look forward to that. Last but not least, on May 5th, it's also the deadline for the Name, Name That Quail contest. This is the Montezarino Quail, which has probably not had a formal name in its 64-year almost history. And the deadline is May 5th. Anybody could submit. We said in 164 characters or less, why you chose the name for the quail. It could be a pet name. It could be a, you know, kind of a non-gender name, whatever you want. There's some guidelines on our website. Send in your submission. We have about 10 already. And then the youth commission will be picking and making a recommendation to council. And that will come up at our May, May 18th meeting as well. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for the city manager?
Yes.
Yes.
At the last city council meeting, I believe that city manager Leon Artis said that the new office counter was opening up. And on the Friday, I came in after getting my Krispy Kreme donut for, with my COVID vaccination and saw that it, it was great. It was, opening up the back is a real step forward. So I wanted to compliment staff, including city manager Leon Artis on making that happen. And I know that all the staff had to pull together, but I think it's, it's really good for the city of Monte Serena. So thank you.
And thank you for the donuts, council member. They were well received.
Very good. All right. Other comments, questions? Otherwise, let's move to future agenda items. Councilmembers, Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, given that COVID had caused a delay in the census, our redistricting will not be happening until December. And I would like to agendize on a future agenda, invite the Citizens Redistricting Commission to present and educate our council as well as our residents on the process of redistricting and how important resident input is into shaping our representation in Sacramento, particularly along the lines of the issues that are important to us. And so I'd like to see that happen. I, I attended a webinar today and they are willing and ready to address, have educational seminars and address councils and teach people the process that will begin shortly.
Great. Councilmember Mecha check. No, that was my hand that was sitting over your section. Never mind. Any other future agenda items anyone wants to bring up?
If, if I can add one more thing, I'm so sorry, Mayor. The, the website is called WeDrawTheLinesCA.org. So it's definitely worth checking out. Again, the redistricting won't happen until middle of December. So it may push our, our primary back a little bit as well.
Interesting. All right. We, seeing no other future agenda items, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for April 20th of 2021. Thank you all.
Great, bye. Thank you.
Thank you all.